One business owner, or not our, or even some of the leaders in town, that are not appalled by your decision to appoint Mr. Purnell.
You didn't ask me. I'm a business owner, and I'm a leader in this town.
Yeah, continue.
Absolutely, but if there are any tall conflicts, be careful, because there's a lot of them sitting here right now. Go ahead.
Thank you. I have not talked to anybody in town, some business owners, okay? I have talked to a lot of people in town, and nobody is in favor of this. I would like to ask you, okay, to either rescind his name, or put this, table this until after the ethics complaints are talked about, and then if there is no problem there, and it comes up in the next meeting, so be it. Thank you for your time, folks.
Well, Jim, I will first respond by saying, there are no ethics problems here. If there was, it wouldn't have been nominated. One of the things that we have done for many years is whenever a member has, feels that there's a conflict, and sometimes it's because they're not related, or they don't have a business interest, but maybe they just know the person very well, and they feel comfortable that they should vote. And we always allow them to recuse themselves. And so, this is not, this is all very open. I believe that there is no reason to pune the integrity of Austin, saying, "Well, if you won't recuse yourself," because quite frankly, if you didn't, then the chairman would simply say, "You can't do it." This is, this is all very open. We are a small town. I actually feel more comfortable when people know the town, and know a good number of people here. This is, you know, if you have to basically know no one, or have no affiliations, then not question if you're really, you know, suited to make decisions on behalf of the community. Just want to explain my viewpoint, and I appreciate your concern. But, it's just, this, this is a small town, and everybody, you know, many people know many, many local folks. And I guarantee that they've lived here for three years, or for 13 years. And, you know, it's just the nature of, you know, a small-town government, and it works well. There is, there is, there's no hidden agenda. There is no secret government. This is all stuff that, especially since the age of the internet, just has come out of the, out of somewhere. But this is about the nature of the town. And I, quite frankly, like the fact that we have someone who can, knows about building and development, and issues that are required. It's up to the advantage of the town. And to think that, it's just, it's very, it's very narrow-minded thinking, and I don't think it applies at all in this situation. And I don't have any reservations about making what I think is a very, very appropriate nomination. And it'll be up to the council favor which to accept the nomination. Okay, Jim? Yes?
Yes, Kim Holloway, and David Korten, and I just want to reflect exactly what the gentleman here said. I'm sure that if there was a more senior available tonight, that there would be more people here tonight to speak on behalf of this appointment. I just feel like, out of all the people, possibilities that could even be approached to sit on this commission, to make a selection, and I don't need to go through the history, of the son of a builder and developer who worked together in business, who live in this town, who have many projects on the horizon, can ethically sit on a commission, and I don't care how many times you say you're going to recuse yourself, and you're going to be impartial, and you're going to do all of those things, at the end of the day, ethically, it stinks. And I'm not saying this against Austin. As a person, personally, if it were anyone else with their family, and appointing a family member to a commission, I would have serious reservations about accepting that. I feel like, and I've had many people that I've spoken to, and I am one person who has filed that complaint. I filed it the day I found out that this happened. And I've talked to many, many people. Not you, Mr. Goulias, because I know your arrogance, but...
Kim, keep in the line. You're the same way, you and your husband. I've put up with you people for six damn years. I'm sick and tired of it.
You started everything online.
That's where you're going to pull this from? Hey, whoa, whoa, whoa. This is my meeting, not yours. Not yours. Not yours. Not yours. And he's a big boy. He can take care of himself.
That's right.
You know, Kim, every damn time you've come to these meetings, all you've wanted to do is bitch and complain. You've been here three times.
That's false.
Three times. Go ahead.
Everyone, everybody calm down, please. Is there anything you wish to add to your statement?
Yes, I did not vote to Mr. Goulias, because I will not vote to him. But I will tell you that there are many business owners that I've talked to, and many residents that I've talked to, that feel exactly the same way. And I just think that it's in the best interest that he pulls his name, or that there is, the Ethics Art Commission reviews this, and makes a decision before he is appointed to this position.
Well, if there is a conflict... If there is a conflict, then we should find that way. Then whatever decision the council makes, if they decide to proceed, would be, then be known avoid. But, quite frankly, if every time somebody just objected to a nomination, and said, "Well, we're going to take it to the Ethics Commission," basically, it just basically could stop the local government from moving forward. And that, that's just not how we operate. And if people object to that, then I cannot help it. Yes, yes. Yes, give it back.
My name is Bob Paladino. I'm 103 Buckingham Road. And at the point of that sound in something, I just wanted to bring up two issues when I did find out. And again, the same thing that both of them said about you too. I don't even know who you are. But the two points that I wanted to be addressed. First one, that I do know that his father's on the council. And with him also, you know, being on the commission, if he was selected, I don't know therefore that would take us. And the second point, and it was already said with both of you who was here, also in reference to what your business is, your professional life and so forth, I think that you possibly could also be an issue to add just before.
Thank you. Yes?
I would like to make a motion that we table the nomination. We have an election that's literally a week away, and my seat's up. I know Councilmember Goulias' seat is up. Mr. Brittingham is up. We've got three new council members coming in. It's going to be a majority of the council. I think that we should wait until the second meeting of October to let the new council take office and evaluate the candidate. I just, I don't think this is something that we should be voting on when there's a whole new council that's going to be coming in.
So you made a motion?
I have.
Do we have a second to the motion? We don't need a second. I'm just asking if we do it. All right? We have a motion by Councilmember Tindall to postpone any decision on the nomination of Austin Purnell to the Planning Commission until the meeting following the election, which is the...
I'm requesting not the first meeting, because that's when they would take office. I think that they should have a little bit of time to adequately evaluate the candidate before they have to make a decision.
So the motion is for the second meeting in October.
Which is October 26th.
October 26th, to be precise.
But, but, but this council cannot dictate the actions of the upcoming council, or possibly the upcoming mayor. Yes, the motion can be to table this, this vote, but to say when the next council will, will, will act, that's not our place.
I respect the amendment.
All right, is everybody clear? Do you want to vote any more here? Okay. So, we have a motion by Councilmember Tindall to postpone this nomination, a decision on his nomination. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
All right, so the record show that the vote was one in favor and three against. And of course, Councilmember Purnell did not vote, because he already recused himself of this time process. All right, so, if I understand correctly, David, then we, back to where we started, and the council now needs to make a decision rather than to vote for or against the nomination.
Before we do, I would like to say, we all talk to who we talk to.
Could you take your mask off so we can hear you?
No.
Can you speak into the microphone now?
I will.
Thank you.
We all talk to who we talk to, and we all move in different circles. Albert, I've been a member of this council for a while now. And, and I have never been contacted by a candidate for a commission prior to Mr. Purnell. And I think Mr. Purnell has shown interest, and he brings expertise to this commission. And as I put there, I would like to move to approve your recommendation.
So, as follows now, the, the motion has been made to approve the nomination. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. The outcome of this particular motion is three votes for, and one vote against, and one vote abstained. Okay. So now move on to the second.
Did you want to do the swearing-in this evening?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Okay. While he's preparing for his paper, do you want to sign?
Love that. I just raise my hand and repeat on the meeting. I, George Austin Purnell.
I, George Austin Purnell.
I swear and affirm.
I swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and the laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill.
To the best of my skill.
And judgment.
And judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of the Town of Berlin.
Execute the office of the Town of Berlin.
Planning and Zoning Commission.
Planning and Zoning Commission.
According to the Constitution and the laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and the laws of the state.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Just for the record, I feel the same way that Councilman Dean feels. I also received a call from Austin, asking for my support for this commission. And I've been here longer than anybody, 32 years. I've never received a call permitted by to replace all the commission. So, Austin, you're the first person.
Thank you. We're now on item three of the night's agenda. This is a stormwater presentation by EA Engineering regarding the, what remains to be done on our stormwater upgrades and mitigation, and basically all the work that still remains to eliminate major flooding in the Town of Berlin. We started a few years ago, working from the east towards the west in terms of the town borders, because essentially, from an engineering standpoint, a common sense standpoint, water flows towards coastal banks, tributaries, and flows eastward. So as we've corrected problems of flooding in this town, we've corrected them so that the water flows from a neighborhood, goes to the wetlands that we created, and then into Bottle Branch and so forth, the branches here. And the next step is what EA Engineering is going to be reviewing with us tonight.
Sure. My name is Darrell Kohler. I'm with EA Engineering, Science and Technology. So, like the mayor said, this, is this... A little better? So, this, we, back in May, we did a more broad presentation on the stormwater, where we've come from, where we are, and the future projects. This presentation is a bit more hyper-focused on the two big areas that we know of, is, I'm switching here. Really, the future projects of the area we call Nelson, Franklin, and Pine, as well as the West and Abbey Lane area, along West Street out a little bit. So, those are the, in our, in our planned approach for stormwater projects, the next two that, you know, we really want to do. And they got, you know, a bit of price tag to them. So this presentation wants to talk about some types of phases we can do. I think it's going to be very difficult to go out and get another million or $2 million like we have in years past. So we want to still do something. And that's essentially what I want to go over. These are the, I'll go over the projects themselves and the types of phase approaches. When we talked about future projects in the last presentation, these are the four projects with, it's on automatic.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think you're out of time.
No problem. Hey, I can talk like that. Well, the Nelson, Franklin, and Pine, that's essentially the area between the submerged water wetlands project that we recently completed, and the improvements along Cedar, and then out to Blue Street. And then the improvements at West Street and Abbey Lane, as anybody in that area knows, that it's feet, multiple, a couple of feet underwater each significant range of that. So the project of Nelson, Franklin, and Pine. So this is the second phase, if you exclude the Graham Avenue as a phase. But this includes increasing the stormwater pipe divance, essentially the size. The latter half of Nelson, we've completed half of it. The section between Franklin, one Franklin between Nelson and the Grayson Prines, and then down Pine Streets here. The design is 95% complete. We say that it's complete, but, and we might want to section out a couple of things, like the utility with the Verizon and the fiber optic that we have there. So, total budget cost, construction, permitting, everything, $850,000 is an estimate based on that level of completion of the design. So, the Nelson, Franklin, and Pine, a little bit more history, or the thoughts on the phase approach. So, some town services, and maybe, you know, through the utility, we talked about, let's at least get in, get into that section and do, once again, because we recently jetted a section on Nelson. It was more of a coordination with Purdue. But now we can go ahead and jet Franklin and into Pine, vacuum it out, then proceed with, you know, using the video equipment and the CCTV, assess that, and isolate some areas that may actually be, we know we have conflicts in there. We know we have sanitary that go through, and there's some junction box there. So we can identify specifically where those are, and maybe tackle a couple of those utility conflicts. Second bullet item, for both of these projects, we recently submitted what's a notice of intent, or a notice of answers, to FEMA for $500,000 in funding. If an NOI is accepted, it's not an obligation, it's just that, hey, we would like to apply for it. If it's a town accepted to town, or if an NOI is accepted, the town will proceed with an application for the, which is due here, and I think in November. So we're expecting to hear about, again, we applied for this one, as well as the West and Abbey. And that funding is, is based on the expectation that it's a 25% match. So we, we kind of worked out that funding is in terms of, okay, what can we manage in the utility fund for a 25% match? Now, we're also going to go, this is through FEMA, we're also going to go to MEMA, the Maryland component of the Emergency Management Administration, and ask for them to, they have a program that they'll split that cost with it. So it'd actually be a 12.5% to the town. And we're going to be applying for that as well.
And Darrell, I have a question. Is this, these grants, will they help pay for the piping? Because most of that so far have been for the submerged wetlands and natural infiltration, which we're all for, but that can't be done right in this area, there's no way.
For these projects, this grant application, yes. That's specifically why we're targeting this. It's for nuisance flooding. You have, now, you have to demonstrate impact by cost. I mean, it's FEMA, so, you know, we've got to go back and track insurance claims, we've got to knock on some doors and get real receipts. And those owners of Nelson say, "Hey, I put a claim in 2013 for $2,000 for my garage." And we've got to capture a lot of data. It's a little bit of an effort for these applications, but it's what we did to get some funds for William Street, because we were able to associate it with the electric facility and the generators there and impact. So the short answer is yes. We are applying this because this does apply funding for these types of projects, for nuisance flooding. It's not a water quality project that they're, that they're funding. They, they want to reduce their insurance claims, which associated with flooding. So we apply it again for this one and West and Abbey. Now, once we complete those initial services that we, you know, kind of do in-house, if we want to phase contractually components, I would propose something like this. We would, we know that there is a Verizon fiber optic on Pine. It's a significant utility. It's, I believe it's a decent-sized concrete duck bank, and it's a lift to get that relocated. We do not have a firm quote in hand, but we, that was one of the first, we know that has to be done so we can get that section. So we need to account that for Verizon. So what we can do, get a real price for that, and get that out of the way. Next, part of this is we have to do a little bit of rerouting, and I'll put a small pump station for the sanitary in Pine, because we, if, the larger-sized pipe will conflict with what we want to do. So we have to do some stormwater, or some sanitary improvements. And then the remaining three sections of actual stormwater piping, we would do it in those three phases. And this is kind of broken down to $850,000. Now, I will say, these prices are, are based on what the, are proposed to the design approach would be, which would be reinforced concrete pipe. Now, we conceded on Nelson, or on Graham Avenue, because we're really going to get that price up. Yeah, and so those, those last three would be stormwater improvements actually for the piping. So we can consider, instead of the concrete pipe, to go with galvanized. And as an engineer, I would be okay with that, as long as that piping really isn't exposed to, you know, the air. I mean, the air combined with that water gets trapped in there, that's, you know, essentially what happens to the galvanized, that it oxidizes and rusts and stuff like that, and it goes away. So that's why we want the concrete pipe.
Because concrete won't rust, basically.
Yeah. We, and I, we don't, I don't, it was, it was an enclosed section for Graham Avenue, so I think we'll be fine. I, I wouldn't have signed off on it. There's some types of things, and we can, instead of the full width of payment, we can do the same thing, just the width of the pipe, and we can bring these costs down, I believe. But, you know, if, in lack of, this, this kind of phase approach, I believe, is like lack of funding. If we don't get funding from FEMA, then let's, in the funding that we have on an annual basis, you know, chip, chip off some phases. Let's, let's keep moving, and then if we apply next year, you know, our budget isn't 850,000, it's, you know, 700,000. We still keep making progress and chipping away, and not waiting to get the funding and do nothing.
They don't go into a law?
Yeah. And then it just continues to make our, our grant application stronger, you know, as we bring those costs down. And then these little improvements that we can do, and get rid of some of those utility conflicts will help us. So that's the phase approach for Nelson and Franklin. The West and Abbey Lane. So this is the piping that comes along Abbey, which is Abbey, and essentially Abbey, I think Westminster, over to West, West Street, and then from that intersection all the way down to the culvert, the Bottom Branch. So you've got a long stretch of pipe, and that's really where it drives this cost up. Is that length, and that size of concrete pipe, and the amount of roadwork and utility work that we have to get in to. But with that said, that is, this estimate is really based on a very conceptual thought process. This, this project has not been designed. And you'll see that in my thoughts and the phase approach for this. But that's, that's what we need. I mean, my thoughts on the design are, we have a small area that I think we can do some water quality improvements.
And Darrell, it is, well, this project was a different spot, but obviously, probably the spot that has the most actual flooding of anywhere that's still left in town, in other areas, but this is the big one. Would you be, would we be applying to the same federal and state agencies for money to get these projects done? I mean, basically, are we basically competing against ourselves? Or are there other alternatives?
We're, well, we would make a decision. If, yes, we are applying, we're looking to apply for FEMA for this project as well. If MEMA comes back and accepts both the NOIs for these two projects, then we will need to make a decision of, okay, do we go after both of them? Here are the funds that we will have to match. But in the past, we went after both of them with the caveat that, here's the funds we have. If you award both, you know, we, we need to do A, B, and C. We've done that in the past, where we've applied for two, two projects under the same grant, with the caveat that if you, if you gave us both, here's our, here's our funds available.
The flow of the areas that the stormwater was currently set up and were the improvements we made, do both areas of, you know, the Graham, Grayson, Nelson, do they flow to the same place as the West Street? Because I said, West Street definitely goes Bottom Branch, right?
Yeah, essentially, no, I mean, eventually, obviously, they do, but no.
I'm talking about, as far as getting it out of town and to the...
No, there are two, there are two paths. Nelson, Franklin, that's going to get into Hudson Branch, and get over Flower Street, and then it'll get to the Treatment Plant. Bottom Branch takes a little bit more southern route, and then comes, you know, kind of where Hudson Branch meets, right at the Treatment Plant.
So basically, it's like having two different stormwater challenges in the same town, because the water is not flowing to the same spot, it's flowing to two different, I'll call it tributaries, or...
They're, 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 they're both, and, I mean, it's Hudson Branch and Bottom Branch. They're two waterways, well, of the three. You've got Kids Branch on the other side of town, and then Hudson through the middle, and then Bottom Branch to the south.
But they take two different paths to get you across what they're capable of.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I think people would figure out is, what they ask is that, where does it, why is the water stopped here? Where does it need to go? And of course, some people have much more understanding than others, based on either knowledge or how long we've lived here. And so, as far as, I'm just asking, sure, as far as our applying, because certainly I like the idea of applying to remedy both situations, and the fact that it goes to two different branches does not create a problem, and actually, we're not competition with ourselves, we're trying to solve two problems in the same town.
Yeah, I mean, they're isolated enough project-wise to, they're, they're two different branches, they're two different projects, they're even just flooding in two different areas of the town.
And you'd really be looking for more of the design on this money, than construction you will on the other.
Well, yeah, when we go to the phased approach, I'm going to, Troy, I'm going to answer that very briefly. The first two bullets are the same. I think we, I think we, since we have the tools in the town, let's jet and vacuum these. Now, this is a bit of more of a lift, I don't want to overcommit Jamie and staff, but this is a length, this is a bit lengthy of pipe to connect, to jet and vacuum that. But we should, you know, consider trying to do that and then video it. So, but, under the, you know, the attractive and the capital improvements, I would recommend my first step is to at least do a partial design. I mean, I would recommend we do a full design on two reasons. One, the design will refine our costs. And then, two, a part of this area at Abbey and West, Westminster, if I have that right, is the pond, the town, that's a town-owned pond, I believe, right? So we can convert that into a submerged gravel wetland, like we did, well, not converted, because it was rural property, on Graham. But if we convert that to a water quality feature and a stormwater or submerged gravel wetland, and maybe expand into that parcel and make a larger facility, that is a project that is very palatable for funding, so it would be multiple funding agencies we see. And they want design, for those applications, they want the design to be.
So, in that, and what I call the West Street, Abbey Lane, and associated areas, the design for a submerged gravel wetland would be necessary in order to make potentially a successful application?
I wouldn't say necessary, I thought, it strengthens it significantly, yes.
But obviously, I think we all want to go with our best foot forward and with the greatest possibility of success. And as you say, you can't guarantee it's for any one year, but hopefully, certainly becomes inevitable, if we've done all of our homework right and met all the requirements. And I think that, none of this happens flat, but I don't, I think all, everybody, I think everybody doesn't want the momentum to stop.
Exactly. And it's, I say, when I say it's not necessary, there are brands that we are currently pursuing that will fund design services. And we actually just submitted one for what we call the Bay Road and Bottom Branch, or Bay Street and Bottom Branch Road. This is a street restoration project where that main trunk line of sewer is suspended right along Hudson Branch and the Treatment Plant. So we applied for a funding to actually design and permit that. Because that's, that's important, not so much a flooding, standing water that we see, but it's important because that is, has tremendous flow and it is eroding those banks in that area, and we're losing that section. So we will quickly, over time, what we see with Verizon, we'll let, we'll lose that section as it goes through the branch, and it will work its way towards, you know, 376, 374, I don't know, transposed, Bay Street.
Bay Street.
So, yes, we are applying for design services for that. And we can apply for design services for these, for the submerged gravel wetland as well.
They're not mutually exclusive?
No, not, and the FEMA grant that we're applying for, for this, West, we're including design services in that, because it's not designed. When our, if we get the notice of intent, and actually, we might see that Nelson Franklin and Pine Street, I always see that getting approved prior before West, from FEMA, because we have a design-ready project to give. And they may say, okay, we'll fund this one. But once you get the design ready, we'll, you know, apply next year. Or they could say, apply for both, I don't know. But in this application through FEMA, we included the design.
But Darrell, fixing this problem will not create another problem downstream, because of the improvements we have already made.
Correct.
Okay, so, so, so it will be more water, more water going under 113th, especially under Flower Street, but because we've made the improvements downstream, it will be able to handle the volume of water.
Yeah, and I think one of the last events, we really saw that with, with that offline wetland after Flower Street. You know, had that not been there, we saw the rest of the town flooded, but had that not been there, we would have saw Flower Street flooded, we would have saw that whole community of the 113 flooded. Yeah, it made its way into that facility. That's, that off-line wetland down after Flower Street on Hudson Branch really helps us out more. It takes that water away from Hudson Branch and stores it there versus pushing it down. And then we would, you know, each of these little structures or these facilities that are, we call environmental site design or water quality, that's what helps us. You know, the Graham Avenue, we're getting that water down and you can infiltrate versus all that water going down the salmon streets and flooding. And there's limited areas we can do that, but West, I can't help but think we can do something there, too.
There is, there is some space available. It's not as densely developed as, like I say, the area around Graham and Nelson.
Exactly.
And those areas, which have been, the homes have been there for more than a half century.
So that's what I would propose, you know, for this. Let's, let's keep the, put on the gas for the funding applications, especially since this is more nuisance flooding. Keep applying for FEMA and MEMA money. And let's see if we can piece off a little bit like we did on Franklin that are on Graham, that we know that it's more likely to get funded. So if we can do a little project and take a little bit of water off of that intersection and it's funded.
So is your expectation that you'll be able to give us a more clear picture of where we are by November? Is that, is that what I understood you to say?
If we, you know, move the path of doing type of, you know, conceptual assessment, absolutely. And, I mean, I sort of, I know all the grant applications and due lines, due dates and all that. I just know that FEMA is going to be due here in November. At the end of January is the next funding for Chesapeake Bay Trust and DNR. So if we had a project like that designed or fairly long, then they're confident that it could be ready to be constructed. And, you know, that's something they want funded.
I think, and again, if I correct my, I think that the council has stated now where it has been for the last three, four years, that we want to proceed with all due diligence. And, you know, we want to make sure that we've got projects in design or designed enough to follow for the application. Because, you know, in general terms, we're about halfway through the two tiers of improvements that need to be made. And I just hate to, hate to see us lose momentum when it was, when we've come so far, but we were only about halfway to gold. Is that a fair summary?
Yeah, I mean, we've done, I think what we proposed, what we showed last time, eight or nine projects that we got done throughout town.
And Darrell, when we look at Weston Abbey and Henry's Mill and Henry's Green, we talked about offline wetland that kind of sits back between this section right here.
Correct.
And we submitted grant application, a grant application for that previously, but we were not successful because we didn't have any agreements in place.
Correct.
For the property. During the last presentation, I asked for us to pursue something like that, so that we're more prepared for next rounds of grant funding. Where do we stand with it?
I didn't, I looked into that. I don't think we can get, since that's on that cul-de-sac unless that, that, it's not, I mean, it's Hagfield, right, on the other side? We have to go on that side. I have, I have not approached that owner, but if that's the next step, we need to approach that owner and see if.
Is that owner in town or out of town?
That's in town, I believe.
I think that parcel may be out of town.
Is that divider between Franklin and all on the other side is out of town?
Yeah, I think that parcel's out. But I think that if we're looking, it doesn't sound like that's a site for this project off of Weston Abbey, but if we're looking just a step further down the line, I think it would be nice to begin that dialogue with the property owner in the event that a grant opportunity arrives.
There's no harm in that dialogue.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Darrell, knowing the time that, channeling all this water towards Flower Street and those residents that we had so much problem with, Shaw Street, the property backs up to the ditch. I think we need to make sure, I think Dane touched on it a little bit, but we need to make sure that those properties are intact before we keep channeling water through there, because the back of those properties, as you know, they were real low, the water, had a water problem, and now we got those people happy. For years, they complained, and I don't know, I'm not going to be here to hear them complaining. I don't know if I'm back up there complaining again. So I think we need to make sure that we keep an eye on that ditch bank.
Okay.
On both sides, because the opposite side belongs to the town.
Right, the park.
And we need to keep an eye on that, because that's going to be a lot of pressure coming through that, going through Flower Street.
Is there a way to enlarge the flow that will go along, I know that particular ditch, we're all very familiar with, and it's not the only one, but that's, that's the one that seemed to get the brunt of it, because it has the L turns, two L turns? Is there some way to enhance that?
Well, there has been some work done with stabilization of the ditch backs, and we just want to make sure that, in the scheme of things, that stabilization is maintained, and since we're going to be getting a lot of water, possibly enhanced going forward. So I think that is utmost important, just as Darrell had said.
And what we can do to address that simply is, we do these, during the design process, we're interested in these stormwater improvements. We need to model that water surface elevation, you know, so far up and downstream of our project. You know, state requires, I don't know, some, you know, 1,000, 2,000 feet or so. We can just simply extend that down, you know, take it across 113th. We extend it down so we can demonstrate to the state that we're not increasing that, you know, 10, 25, the year storms water surface elevation, because it dissipates up a good time. What we would just do is extend that down that reach, just make sure that we haven't missed anything. And it should be, it should be no problem. If our project shows that we are not increasing that water surface elevation, it should be fine, but there's no, not much greater lift to extend that model down further. It's essentially, it's multiple computer programs that some brighter engineers, EA, utilize.
So I might just probably summarizing what I think you just said, that we think we can handle capacity, but it would not be anything overwhelming to expand the ability of those ditches to increase the flow without overflowing into the yard adjacent. Is that, is that basically what you were saying?
I guess what I'm saying is that it's, we would just include that in evaluation. I don't envision having to make any improvements to those, to those ditches.
But I guess what we're saying is, despite all the best computers in the world, Mother Nature decides to override those computers, would, is there, is there potential to increase the capacity flow for those ditches if it's needed? And when, I mean, that, I think that's what, bottom line of this.
We can widen. I mean, that, that structure under Flower Street is, it's got two structures that, you know, are what, seven or eight feet wide?
But see, at least from talking to the folks in the neighborhood for the last few years, it's, it's before you get to Flower Street, where those.
Well, that's what I mean, I mean, I widen it all the way up to 113th. That's what we could do.
I guess that's what we were trying to figure out, if that's feasible. Okay, and if it's necessary, it's not something that's intermalon creates.
No, no.
Okay.
Where would you, where would you get the property? From what side? I mean, you've got the residents on this side.
That would be the, yeah, that would be a handicap, because that's the owner of that little shop right there on the corner.
All right. But the problem is, the people that complain the most, that the property backs up from Shaw Street, they're the ones that don't have any property. You know, their property is close to their house, or the ditch is close to their house.
So we could go that way, yeah.
Yeah. So, me thinking that this is not a, I'm not a professional or anything, but what you did there at Flower Street on both sides, the stone and whatever it is called, would like to me, if that was channeled more or less behind those properties the same way or protected.
Oh, we could do that.
The same way.
Yeah.
That would be a lot more stabilization for the property.
Oh, well.
I was just thinking of.
In terms of stabilizing that bank, there's, there's a few options we can do. Yeah, and without getting too costly. And that's stuff that we can, we can really do on our own.
And I'd say, just make sure that in your formal presentation to the mayor and council, that that option is in there, because, you know, we want them to be aware of the city that if this becomes a problem, it may not, but if it does, here's, here's the contingency plan, this is how it will be done, and it's not something that's going to take years, it can be done quick, fairly quickly compared to everything else we're doing.
But, I mean.
If you understand, the folks, they've gotten rid of the flooding that they dealt with for decades, and they obviously don't want it to come back. And if there is the potential where it's coming back, we just want to make sure that the town can act quickly with a plan that's ordered and followed ahead, and keep that flooding from returning.
I think the important component in that area is, we're not seeing the water breach, you know? So our concern, I think, right now is, you know, velocity and the slopes you're riding. So I, we should keep an eye on that and fill those before we get too bad. Like patching them and filling them, and you put some seed and have it grow, that's, that's manageable, it's maintenance. If we go in there and armor it with stone or riprap and basket, gating baskets, that gets expensive quick. And if we can stay on top of it, maintain it, fix those erosion rails and.
And plus, it keeps Jamie out of trouble.
Yeah. You know, managing smaller erosion rails is a lot easier than going and putting a lot of stone in.
Yeah. Is that your, have they?
No, I mean, the last part was, you know, when we get a refined design, that we would do a similar approach and phase out sections of that construction. But, yeah, I mean, that's, that's my thoughts. Let's just get out there and piece a few things. Let's at least jet and clean these pipes and video, and then watch those videos. You know, that's a fun little afternoon to watch the videos and see what these conflicts are, see if, I mean, you never know, we might find something in there that's, that's blocking it completely, and we take that out, get a little bit of relief. And then just keep applying for these grants. We've got to. We've got two or three coming up. These will come up here in the fall or the beginning of the year, so we're going to be putting in that then. I think, I mean, I'm sure I'm biased, but I think our applications are getting stronger and stronger each time because we keep applying for them, but-
But just keep, obviously Jeff and Jamie posted in detail, and the council has certain, has developments come about.
Yeah, hopefully we hear from Mima here shortly. We got an acknowledgement email saying that they're overwhelmed with responses and that they're going to take a little bit more time to decide.
That's about it. Thank you. Any other questions?
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, now we're on Title IV of tonight's agenda, and that's Strategic Demolition Grant and Community Legacy Grants, and Avi Wells is going to bring up the date on both of those.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Every year, Department of Housing and Community Development start their grant process for a community legacy grant and strategic demolition grant. Both of these grants have no match required. Just want to get that out there just to start out with. Every year, I've applied for the community legacy grant to help fund our facade grant improvement program that we offer to the downtown businesses in our Main Street district. It's a one-to-one match. Someone invests $10,000, we reimburse them for $5,000. I write that grant to them, for DHCD to give us money so we can offer that grant. I would like to apply for that again, and that's okay with you. One of the things that I talked with Tim Lawrence about also was the possibility of adding some historic street lamps to Pitt Street, which we can include in this grant as well. I would like to apply for $100,000 for a community legacy grant for FY21. The grants are due October 15th, so been working on it the last couple of weeks, but wanted to make sure that I, for Jeff, that I got your approval to write this. And then for a strategic demolition grant-
What's happened on this strategic demolition grant, there's, there's a, a number of things that need to be thought through. We've got an opportunity that came knocking, potential, there's $500,000 in grant money out there for demolition, and what I'm talking specifically would be the, the old processing building at the Tyson Line. So again, we've not got that far yet, but you know, the one thing that we're going to seek here tonight as well is permission to apply for that grant as well.
We've had our eye on this grant for quite some time. This is the, due to the COVID pandemic, they were pushed back on their grant process. A lot of, that money went to the Norrie Grant. So usually this grant is available in the spring, so obviously because of everything, it's now available. So I've had my eye on this grant for a number of years and finally getting the opportunity to ask permission.
I think that's been our intent for a long time, which is like anything else, waiting for stores to be in the center line up so we can-
Exactly.
So, 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 so with the match?
No, there's zero match.
Zero match for both?
There's zero match for both. What they do like to see is in, so a lot of in-kind donation, in-kind match would be Town Services, our Public Works, and our utility guys, that would be an in-kind match for their time. But there's no financial obligation on our part.
No financial match.
Correct.
All right, so what you're seeking-
We've not received the grant yet, so don't get-
Right. I'm also working with the county grant writer on this particular one because it is such a large grant. So I've been working with Tom Perlazzo and Michelle Scarlata with the Economic Development Department of Worcester County on this for the last couple of days just to get all of our ducks in a row and until tonight to present it.
And I have to say, the reorganization that the county did allows for us to now work closely together for these grants where the county and the town can work together for something we both believe needs to be done.
Correct.
And I thank the county for the reorganization. They always have good people, but the way it's been restructured allows us to get more things done by partnering rather than doing it separately. So, like I say, there's no guarantees, but I'm hopeful.
Do you need a motion?
I have one question if you'll mind. Wasn't one of, Jeff, wasn't one of the ballpark numbers we received for demoing that building, wasn't it around 600,000?
Yes.
So we'll have a little bit of a-
I've had, I've had, three years ago, I had a quote of zero dollars.
Oh, I like that.
Okay, I had a quote of zero dollars three years ago, and I've seen it as high as 600,000.
Okay, so we, we have some wiggle room in there. Wasn't a firm $600,000 to demo?
And if, if we do, or I'd rather say when we do receive the grant, if approved tonight, obviously we would go through the R and P process like we always do.
Thank you. That was my last question.
All right, and for Avi's presentation, is there any motions related to her request?
I'd like to make a motion to pursue both these grants.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Purrell, Purrell, to proceed with applying for both the legacy grant program and the strategic demolition grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, please pass the record show with unanimous decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is our departmental reports.
No, sir, we have one more motion for the AT&amp;T-
Oh, I'm sorry, the AT&amp;T.
Yep, so this item presented before you is the AT&amp;T leases space from the town of Berlin on Franklin Avenue water towers. The lease that's in play now, that's, that's active as we speak, expires May of 2021. This proposed new lease would begin June of 2021. The current lease, the rental amount to state to the town is $3,283 and change. AT&amp;T originally proposed $2,300 for the renewal. We bartered, if you will. The current lease is for, is a five-year lease, the proposed lease is a five-year lease. The current lease has a 3% escalator and an annual, and again, all said and done, we, we've agreed on 30, the same amount that we're getting now per month, going from a 3% escalator to a 1% escalator and a five-year term. Nothing else?
Of course, when they started negotiating, they went much less-
They wanted, almost $1,000 last year.
Were there some upgrades made to the generator there as well?
Their generator.
Right, and a portion of that also helps back up the pump station that's there.
Correct. Okay, and just as a point of reference, just as a point of reference, has nothing to do with this lease, over on the 346 tower, T-Mobile has leased space over there, that lease is currently paying $2,100 a month. So it came out fairly well at the $3,283 of a 1% escalator. So I'm seeking a motion to approve this.
Anyone wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Fendle to approve the new lease agreement with the new singular wireless as proposed by town administrator Jeff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Please pass the record show, it was unanimous decision by the town. Now, good to the point.
And on this merit, obviously everyone's not in the room, so what I'd like to do is to start with Mary.
Sure.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Dr. David.
Okay, Jamie, we're just working on some valves. We're going to shut down tomorrow on North Main Street from the firehouse roughly to Cheers and that area. We've got to replace three valves tomorrow. Painting inside of Franklin Avenue Water Tower right now, replace the valves in front of it, so we should be good to go here. Hopefully, as soon as we get Franklin Avenue done, they're going to start on 346, finishing it, painting interior. That's all I have. Kate?
I don't have a good thing to add.
Kelsey?
I just want to mention again, flu vaccines are taking place on Wednesday in here from 11 to 1:00. All town employees are welcome to come, and if you have any dependents on your insurance, you are welcome to bring them as well. So just bring your insurance card, any town employee with any insurance, and your driver's license.
Ivy?
I asked Kelsey to-
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, thanks. The, I wanted to share this with everyone. Two years ago, we received a grant for cigarette butt recyclers, if you remember that, and also for new trash cans, which are on their way. They had, the manufacturer manufactured them incorrectly, so they are on their way. They're coming back hopefully, hopefully this week. But I received an email that said that we were one of the top cigarette butt producing municipalities, and they are, they wanted a picture of our awesome volunteer, Mike Wiley, who is our butt collector. So I wanted to share that because I, I think that means a lot to the community that, that we took the initiative to add these throughout town and also at Steve Decatur Park and over at the police station. So I wanted to thank Mike Wiley and, and let you all know that we've got some accolades on this. And then yesterday was the last farmer's market of the season. Robin Thomaselli over at Baked is going to have a few tents set up in the, that drive-through area where PMC drive-through was, starting next Sunday. She's going to be there and a few other vendors are going to be there, so I wanted to pass that on to let everyone know. And then this Saturday night is a relay for Life Drive-Thru Luminary event, and traffic on Main Street will be one-way from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM to allow for cars to be able to drive through. Some of the cars will be decorated and on the road, I'm sorry, on the sidewalk right there by the curb, there'll be no parking on Main Street also Saturday night. There are going to be hundreds of luminary that set up, that they're setting up for, in Memorial for some of their friends and family.
And then one-way traffic flow will be south to north.
Okay, thank you. And we'll have police monitoring and support. Great.
And then for Tim Lawrence, I just want to share that we've been in conversation with American Municipal Power, AV, and their, their peers, it's pretty promising right now. It appears that we may be eligible for a 100% grant, no match, for a 50, up to a 50 KW solar field. And what AV is proposing is that the substation on the roads of the building is doing it on those, on the bollard and the actual building. We're not there yet, but it, it's very promising, up to, as I said, a 50 KW, again, at zero cost. So we'll see how that plays out with our partners. And that's all I have, Mary.
One.
Oh, I'm sorry. Out on, out throughout the town, the, I just threw a complete mic on the other end. Wayfinding signs.
And we, we received one of the grants, there, there's a variety of different DHCD grants. There's a MIT grant, which is a Main Street improvement grant, that we received for these wayfinding signs a couple of years ago.
So what, what's happened, if you take a look at the sign, the picture on the road, and look at the bottom placard, the one that says museum, they have a little bit of decoration on the bottom corners, the outside corners.
Baby cars.
I call them childproof baby corner guards, and just adding a little bit of protection on that for those, for those signs. Okay, and then the photo on the left is the intersection of Pitt Street and William. Our friends at State Highway were very helpful, you know, made a quick phone call, they said they'd be taken care of by the end of the week. They redid the stop bars and the crosswalks at that intersection.
Great.
So big thanks to Mike Morrow and the Maryland State Highway Administration.
Please pass on appreciation of the time, the amount of time from the-
That's great. And that's all there.
That's all for your administrative report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, that was the conference tonight. Do we have any comments from the council?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Dean. I just want to thank Elroy and Tom, the time you all served on here. How many years, Elroy?
32.
Thank you. Thank you for everything you and your wife and family have done for Berlin. Thank you so much. You too, Tom.
Thank you.
I really would like to echo Troy's sentiments for, for our two council members that will be leaving. This is their last meeting, and I could say that I have never been to a council meeting where Elroy was not a member of this, this prestigious organization. Tom and Elroy, it has been my absolute pleasure and honor to serve the citizens of the town of Berlin with you on this council. We have not always agreed, but that is expected because we're all individuals. But what you brought to this council is really going to be hard to replace. Like Troy, I would like to thank you on behalf of the citizens of the town of Berlin for your service.
Thank you, sir.
I'd just like to say that the whole time I've been on this council, I've been enjoying taking all the complaints from the residents, trying to work them out, and when I first got on the council, I was really gun-holding to do everything, but I found out that you don't have money, you can't do, works the same way at home. But when I look around, I think about, you know, when I first started, I almost was on the city council with my former boss for years, and the year that I won, he lost. So that was a good thing. But when I look around and I look at Troy, it's time for me to get off the council. I actually sold Troy clothes to go to high school. And of course, Dane, he worked for Shore Up for years, and, and I am the chairman of the Board for Shore Up, and I'm still holding that position. And Tom, I used to go to him and talk to him before he even came on the council. He used to complain about things. He ended up on the council. And it's just been such a long time, and I've been knowing, the mayor, we're the same, I think we're the same age. And he, as you know, he covered many a meeting, and that's when we used to have real long meetings. He covered with his paper as well as the Democratic-
That was a short time.
He's in short times, yeah. And so we've been around a long time, and I have enjoyed it, and now it's time for somebody else to take over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And there will be, following this formal meeting tonight, there will be a little bit of cake and, for, for celebrating both Elroy and Tom's tender with the town.
And thank for Ali and Shirley, you can just stay for a few minutes, and then we'll, we'll have our little thanks, appropriately with reserve. Okay, do we have any comments or questions from anybody in attendance?
Mayor, I did have one set of questions that were submitted prior to voting. If I may, can I just read these for a minute? These questions came from citizen Jason Walter. He had two questions. One was directly related to impact fees, and the question raised, several sessions ago, Councilmember Purrell mentioned the use of development impact fees in restricted sidewalks along Broad Street. Two sidewalk projects were completed, one with a pervious surface to Isham, and the other was a standard surface sidewalk at Purrell Crossing. Were development impact fees expended to cover the cost of water boats? Last session, impact fees were transferred to cover the budgetary shortcomings in relation to the current Navy project. How was the use of impact fees justified for which streets and to what amount for each? Would other projects have development impact fees funded and to what dollar amount? How was the use justified and what amount is due back to the restricted use fund? The answer, the town of Berlin did utilize impact fees in fiscal year 14 to pay for the two sidewalk projects. the two sidewalk projects. During the last mayor council session, the council did approve $350,000 to be moved from impact fees to the general fund to pay for streets improvements. The use of impact fees is justified as described in the town code, quote, "It is intended to fund any portion of the cost of capital improvements on any public facilities," end quote. Also, quote, "All impact fees collected under, under this article shall be used solely for financing and hole-in-part, the capital costs of public facilities, services, improvements, and equipment required to accommodate and/or benefit room," end quote. Streets where, where impact fees were used to pay for their improvements are East Berlin, West Germantown, Cape Circle, Flower Street, Harrison Avenue, Walnut Hill, Decatur Street, and Mill Street. The cost to improve those streets was approximately $350,000. The amount that will go back to the impact fees during fiscal year 20 will be all monies received in the state highway user fees that are in excess of $111,000 budgeted. Second question is in regards to purchase orders. Municipal purchase orders have traditionally been reviewed in regular sessions of the mayor and council, but as the burden of local government has increased, these expenditure details have been removed from the public eye. Who bears the responsibility for this decision and why was it a municipal spending details are important to maintaining open and honest government? The answer, all purchase orders in excess of $10,000 go before the mayor and council per hour purchasing policy that was approved by the mayor and council on August 15 of 2015. Anyone from the general public may request the financial reports that are provided to the mayor and council. All have a Mary.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from anyone in attendance? Yes, please.
So I'm one of those lovely citizens on West Street, and perhaps I need to start screaming and making a few more complaints since I hear that the other side of the street, we, we've made several comments and I felt complaints that they have about the flooding. I'm just before that flooding happens, thank goodness, but I see my neighbors go out and vote on West Street when the rain does come. There's a ditch that runs behind our property, and I'm quite sure that's a drainage ditch. Very deep. It hasn't been made in there. If you go out there right now, then you go out there, it's at least 56 feet tall with nothing but weeds and overgrowth. Seems to me like if we know that and keep that clear, that at least it may not solve the problem, but it like would help the problem. Costs us nothing, we already have the resources available to it. Not to mention that I don't exactly appreciate when I look out my backyard, and I'm paying for increased taxes, and I'm seeing my money go out the window, and I look out my backyard and I see nothing but an overrun bunch of mess. Call town hall, and it doesn't get resolved, and this has been going on year after year and year.
And what's your address?
306. So it seems like this would be one very small, costs us nothing, tactic that we can take instead of waiting for someone to call and fuel firearms fire. It seems to me like that should be scheduled routine maintenance back there that should be being done. Lastly, this is the first meeting that I've ever attended, and I'm ashamed to say that, but life is life, and I have to say, I don't know Mr. Radler from the man on the street, however I do now, and my fault, the way that you spoke in this room tonight, and I'm honestly very glad that you are no longer going to be representing our town if that's the way you're going to speak to individuals. And I don't know that person from Adam, let me just say that. I don't know who she is, and I don't care what your rift between the two of you that was disrespectful and rude, and it is not okay.
I make, make sure that, that you and Jeff coordinated there, because I think it makes perfectly reasonable request there, and so if you all will communicate directly, and then of course Jeff can communicate with our water resources, because we do have a stormwater resources manager and all that, and I, I would think that this sounds like a very practical approach to, to that particular situation.
That's a very frustrating thing because it isn't very practical, it's a very easy solution. Somebody just needs to come to it.
Well, I'm sure you will be hearing about that, getting back to you very quickly. Thank you. All right. Any other comments or questions? Are any questions or comments from the press? All right. I was going to do that today after.
Go to a jerk.
Take it down. We're going to make sure. Sorry.